Okay, step of three, we call a meeting to order. We have four councilperson here, so we have a warrant, so please attend. Please rise for the invitation. May stand in place. Alice, if you can.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the sufficient rain that you have sent our way. Please be with us tonight and give us the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding to make the right decisions for the city of Chinagrove in Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Mark.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a religion just for all.
We'll call Councilman Kathy Riddas, Councilman Mike Crater here, Councilman Martin Linsky here, Councilman Alice Pollak here. Mayor, he has some surgery, so he won't be here tonight. Mayor Phil Kim, Glenn McCardy, myself will be having the meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the monthly meeting, the Chinagrove Monthly Meeting. Thank you for coming. We'll get started when our business will be over quite a few seconds ahead of the night. The first thing on the agenda is the minutes. Consider an act of approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting, Alice, on October the 2nd, 2014. We've all have received a copy of that. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do you need any more time to read them, or if not, I need a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd, 2014.
If we have a motion to approve the minutes, any second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Alice Pollak has made the motion, and Martin Linsky has seconded it. Any questions? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All of the votes, both the carries, the ministers. Okay, next item on the agenda is tax reports. We have a financial report written by our city administration director, Susan Condon.
This is for the period ending October 31st. The Texas, Texar National Bank balance is $172,433.29. The Nixon State Bank, $1,874.55. Petty cash, $214.42. Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union Certificate of Deposit and Savings is $159,179.56. The Security Service Federal Credit Union Certificate of Deposit and Savings, $160,804.98. Wells Fargo National Bank Public Post Marketing Account, $156,305.99. For total funds of $651,612.71. Attached to the detailed sheet of checks, deposits made on each account, and a profit then lost for the month of October.
Any questions? Next would be our municipal court report. Court clerk, the rest of the chair.
The number of cases filed in our court for October were 106. Fines that were paid, 28 of those just paid the fine. Cases disposed by driver safety deferred or local dismissal were 61, and we have cases pending just for those 106 of 17 for the month. If you'll notice on your sheet, it says the actual for October, the total collected of state fees and other liability was $6,899.4. The total collected for the local, which would have been fines and fees that the city can collect, $6,866.56. For a total of $13,765 for the month of October. If you look at the following line, it says previous payments not entered and input is to court software system. We found $2,178.95 that people had paid but had not been entered in the system. Okay? That's for this month. If you move over to the next line where it says total with corrections, when we go into the court program and cases, we found that many, many times when someone would pay, make a payment, it might be entered in the software program, but it was never closed and dispersed properly. So once we did that, it's going to show that we took in $40,670 for this month. However, money that was collected last year, over the past year, and should have been deposited already, but was never paid to the state, because if you don't put it in the system and you go in there to make your report, which is how it was being done, it's not going to know what to pull because it's not in there. So as we put it in now, we're going to have to pay now. And what we've been doing is working real hard to try and research and find, make sure that all of that money that was deposited matches. We're finding there are a few we can't account for, but we're keeping a file of those, and so far, we've been able to find most of the money was deposited already. Like I said, it's going to take us a while though because it's every, every one case. So when you deduct from the $19,000, if you look across, it's $12,680, then we'll go to the state that should have been collected already, and $14,000 to the state that shouldn't have been collected and deposited, and we're just trying to track and make sure that it's all accounted for. And warrants, we cleared 89 this month, but video, and we're not filing warrants, so we're not updating the warrant status right now until we can get that all, until we get through all of them and clear out what's invalid and then have a good picture of what we can take out and go look for. We're having a little bit of success with the Omni program where we file with them when they have a warrant and they can't get the driver's license until they come pay that fine. Of course, sometimes they could be here four years if they just got their license renewed. It's going to take a while, but we've had a little bit of success.
Thank you, Susan, for all your hard work and cooperation.
We're the ones who does the rest of the court stuff. We're working together on finding the money.
I appreciate it. You're doing a great job, both, all of you guys.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, we'll have the police department report, Chief Ralph Sanger.
Hello, Mary Ellen. Started a fall inquiry in the month having to do with family disturbances, theft, criminal mischief, suspicious person situations. Most of our activity this month had to do with noticing a problem with people without driver's licenses or insurance or registration or inspection on their vehicle. And we started a impound program where these people can have their car until they get their insurance and everything corrected. We seized about, as of yesterday, it was nine, I think we're up to 11 now, where we had an encounter with a local record service. The record service released them and the fee that comes back to the city for that process. I forget the numbers.
Binsa, we'll see, we have collected $675 already and without thinking of $135 to come in, that's been, a vehicle that's been released and the money's due us. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, plus a couple more, you're still, right? Eight that are withheld right now in the impound, and as soon as they're released, the city will receive $135 for each one.
Then also, sometimes the people don't pick up their cars, and I agree with the record company at this time if their car's sold at auction, the city will realize 50% of the sale. The word's already getting out that you better have your car identified and driver's license, right? Another thought that y'all might want to think about is we're using the record company in their impound lot at this time. If we study on the way to have our own lot, then those fees would be considerable enough more than what we're getting now. But that would involve some, you know, putting out some money to make a lot, to secure a lot to keep the vehicles in. One other thing we've done is obtained fleets of credit cards, noticed over the years that we've been purchasing the gas and paying the taxes on it where we don't have to do that because we're a government agency. So we've got a fleet card now that gives a discount per gallon, and they also take all the taxes, so we're probably saving 60, 70 cents a gallon more than we were before. Would like to comment on one other issue. Robert Rodriguez, none of you know, but he suffered with a mild stroke, and he's been incapacitated for about a week now. He was in the hospital and got out of the hospital date before yesterday. Doctor seemed pretty confident that he'll be okay. He may not be, he'll find out Tuesday as to when he can come back to work. And as you know, Robert has no insurance, so he's going to be saddling some hospital bills. I've had it in mind for some time to give Robert a motion, or ask for a motion for Robert to a supervisor position because he does such an outstanding job and take care of all the reserves, panel stuff. So I'd like to see if y'all can figure out some way to make him this time. Do a motion, granny's a sick leave. If you could think on that, maybe we could set another meeting here, get it on the agenda, set another meeting here in the next few days to help him out with his situation.
Definitely consider something.
Wait, any questions?
Thank you again, I would say thank you a lot, so well, thank you.
Next, y'all's agenda is fire department, Fire Chief Mark Ripley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, how's everybody? Chinagrove Fire and Rescue Monthly Running Report for the month of October. Total calls for the month, 63. The number we're about to give you are the total numbers for not just the city of Chinagrove, but our response area and also includes mutual aid calls. Structure fires, four. Grass fire, brush fire, four. Vehicle fires, two. Unauthorized burns, one. Activated fire alarms, three. Motor vehicle collisions, nine. Assist and other assist public, two. EMS calls, use of the medical meter, 38. And acating transported 21 times. I want to, burn ban is still in effect, supposed to be in effect till November 24th. I think that, I'm sure the county fire marshal is probably going to allow burning possibly this weekend. We did have some technical rain, supposed to have possibly some good days to burn before the next fronts start coming through. Again, if you live in the city of Chinagrove, there are ordinances, any open burning has to be done permanent, and it's a very simple process. By phone call, you can either call myself or the ladies here at City Hall. And basically, we just take down your information, address, phone number, and then we'll tell you yes, no, or you can until what time, or whatever, but I believe the county fire marshal is probably going to allow it right the next few days, so I'm ready to get in today with a call. And also, I'd like to take this time to thank the city council for your generous contribution to our national knockout. Again, it was a huge success, we appreciate your generosity. Also like to thank Councilwoman Martin Linsky for the great job she did helping us. She's a godsend, but she really picked up a lot of things. As you can see, we get real busy, so she did a lot on her own. She's also coordinating events for us now. We're doing a lot of school things, fire prevention at the different schools and whatever, so we appreciate that. Also like to thank the ladies here at City Hall for their help, and also for doing the fish pond, because it's always a huge success, and we really appreciate y'all coming out and doing that. It's a few years that you did, and we really missed, and it's so good to have you back, and we really appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Mike, is it? Yes, sir. The next thing on the agenda is assistance to be heard, so if anybody in the hall that hasn't signed up, it's now the time to sign up. Bill or Jacob?
Good evening, Mike. I've been here in Chinagrove for, it's going on 30 years. Most of these people do know me, some of you are my neighbors. I'm here, I've been petitioning city council, oh, I'm going to say two and a half years for street repair. And we're sure everybody is probably here the same week. Take your time, prepare me, we might want to have two then. Got a bunch of signatures on there. Let the city council know that we're displeased with what's going on. First off, we all have beautiful homes, nice vehicles, upstanding citizens. I feel like it's kind of a gallery in my neighborhood. I know that if I put my house up on the market today and somebody came to look at it, they probably wouldn't buy it. They love the house, but wouldn't want to come down the street. I've got dust in my home. I've got disrepair to my driveway. These guys are coming down the industry with these big giant tractors, turning in my driveway and backing out. I don't know anybody that takes a front end loader and drives it into a residential driveway. So I've listed several things here that we'd like to have addressed. We've got phone numbers, addresses of all our neighbors here. I think that we just need to act on it and do something here relatively quick. Also, while I'm here, I know that Mike's my neighbor. Right behind my house, we have the, they changed names so many times, I think it's what the trading, but what it's trading for, the little bar. I have no problem with that, with art being existing, because I've had a restaurant in San Antonio for 35 years. I'm a businessman. I have no problem with them doing business there. They put up that fence there, put the wall back, it took me two and a half years to get that fence put up because I couldn't watch TV. Every car that came through there, the lights were right through my back with it. I finally got that done. We're having to follow again, and it's just like anything else, you let it go, if they take a little bit more, they take a little bit more. I know that some of my neighbors here, I've even had people that opened several years telling me that they can hear things over there. If they can hear it over there, come to my house on Friday and Saturday night. You know, we're all at the point now, most of us are retired, we should be able to enjoy our homes now, and whether to do better or stay a little worse. And I appreciate it, you guys get together collectively and get something done. That's pretty much all I need to say, what I've written down there. If you're impressed, I would appreciate it. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. We do have a street deal on the agenda, we are going to talk a little bit about it in a minute, we'll look this over and discuss it later. Next up to speed is Mike Bartlett.
I'm another one of those gentlemen that live on Triple Bend, and I'm tremendously unhappy with what they have done. We were led, we, me and my neighbors and I were led to believe we were going to get a street center, what, right here on 15, 16, and also on Triple Pine, which there's neighbors out there, but there's very few of them in their streets. 100% better won't be happening now. I'm also concerned that they nearly took out my mailbox. They came within about three inches of taking out my mailbox, took out a good hump of my good grass, I mean, what a hard to get, and I had now what I call a speed bump from the street to my driveway. About that deep, there's nothing there. And after all this rain, I had nicely let it swimming through there. So I'd like to see that nothing else fixed. It was bad before, now it's worse. That's basically what my complaint is about the street project itself, other than like the other gentleman, the dirt and the dust and the gravel that I keep picking out in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Anybody else?
I do not want a street like Triple Bend. I live on Triple Bend, and I don't want a street like that. You were supposed to be next, I think. No way, I do not, no.
Thanks for discussing. Okay, next thing on the agenda is old business, and the first thing up is consider an act on street maintenance projects. And let me give a little rundown for everybody on this, just where we kind of know what we're talking about here. And what we're going to do is we'll let Mr. Clements give his report, and we'll ask some questions, a little bit of floor, ask some questions. I'll just give a little quick rundown here. As you all know, like you said, the street repairs has been a very hot item out here for the last couple of years, and as promised, this council said they were going to do something about the streets. And soon as we, after the last election, that's the first thing we did. We hired a civil engineer, and he come out and looked at the streets, informed us which ones were the worst and what we needed to do to them. And so he can come up with a plan. We wanted to do everybody's street, but with all the money we had, and we did some digging on the budget, we moved and come around, we come up with a three-year plan to do every street in Chinagrove. And the council approved this plan, and the first phase of the bid went out for bid, and as I say, he picked out three worst streets, wanted to get them done first. And so we put out the bid for those three streets. Bid's coming in a little high, a little higher than we thought, so we had to do some other more figuring, and Mr. Clements there did some negotiating, and they were able to get it down to $238,000 is what we paid to have them three streets done, which was in our budget. So we were happy with that. Now, the first phase, like I say, Jim picked out the three worst streets. There was no Pacific Harder, just those three that were supposed to be done. Actually, it was all the way, the way they did it, it was all done about the same time. And I think the final sweep was done on the Creek Bend area on October 31st. There was lots, some other questions about the time of year that we did this. Some people didn't like this because of the time of year. Now, we wanted to do it before winter. I don't know when's the best time to do this, but we wanted to do it before winter, because the streets were rough, and we've been promising the citizens that we were going to do something. So we usually get our rain, which we did get rain this time here, so we went ahead and started doing this street. I know the rain washed a lot of the dust down, but a lot of it didn't. I know that it's in our screens and windows, and I'm sorry for this, but we'll try to maybe do better on the next phase. The three streets that we started on all had quite a bit of base damage. Now, this is something where Jim recommended, Mr. Clements recommended that if we didn't do a full dead recalibration, that, you know, they wouldn't last. So recalibration is tearing up of the original street. Tear up the original street, and that's where all the dust come from, and they grind it up and they mix cement with the gravel, and then they pack this back down. And then it's driven on for a little while, and like I say, this was a lot of dust, everybody had a lot of problem with that. And I'd say, well, we may reconsider doing reclamation on some of these streets, like the Scottson said, that we may not have to do the reclamation, maybe do something else. We'll look into that on our next phase. Right now, we didn't correct this problem. The next step was to double chip and seal. Now, after double chip and seal, they were left to be driven on, I think, for a week. And then we come along and get a, pick up some of the loose gravel that we did, we did, so I don't know, I think they finished early on October 31st. Now, there is one other step that Mr. Clements will report on here in a minute that we can go with, and that is what they call, I don't know what they maybe call it, but it's a sealing. I'll let him explain it to you in a minute. And we can go on, but it is going to, it was not in our original price, so it was going to cost some money. But this time, Mr. Clements, I'll let you have the floor, and you go ahead and give the report, and I'll hold your questions until he gets through, and then we'll ask questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, very good summary, and I do want to point out that, excuse me, prior to me coming on board, the city had hired a geotechnical consultant, I think Verbi and Martinez is their name, or Martinez and Verbi, something like that, and they'd gone out to, they did a bunch of like 15 or 20 test holes in some of the streets around the city, and they came up with the, ultimately with recommendations for the process that we did. So they were the ones who said use 4% cement, do a reclamation for, I think it was six or eight inches, I'm not, I don't remember off my head, but whatever was in the plans, whatever the contractor executed was consistent with what they had recommended. Now, I made a mistake in there. What, you know, when you're using, we use polymerized, the oil we use is called 2P, it's a polymerized oil that you use when you put the two cores down. And you're not, it's not required for you to use precoated rock to use that, so it's the rock that went up down the two cores is washed limestone rock. And over time, it'll get to, like, if you look at Triple Tree, that's the same kind of surface that they put on that. Over time, the streets we did will turn that color, but it takes a certain amount of time. And by the way, D and D contractors, gentleman who's the owner of the company is Kelly Dickens, and he's going to want us, I'm going to want him to kind of address some more specifics about what was done. I noticed here that you guys are, you know, in your notes that you're saying to file complaints about meetings and stuff. You know, I've done this for 26 years, owners of this idea of cities. I've never had anybody, engineers, customers, clients, citizens, nobody's ever questioned my technical ability, ever.
Well, I'm not questioning you per se, sir. I don't even know you from the, I don't know. I'm just talking about the job that was done, the decision.
Well, the decision, I didn't make the decision, it was made by the geotechnical engineer.
You're absolutely correct, so I'm not complaining.
Then why do you want to complain so bad? Then why do you want to complain so much?
I have not complained since.
If you're, go ahead, let's have Mr. Clements there finish his report.
In any event, you know, the next job we do here, if I'm your engineer at that point, you know, we'll use precoated rock. And I got a quote from the contractor to put the conventional fog seal down. That's $14,850. There are not numbers, but cut them some more.
My name is Kelly Dickens. I'm with D and D where the guys that did the labor. From what I see, most of the complaints aren't so much labor issues. I think we're going about the whole process the wrong way. Anytime you try to cover this much quantity with that little money and the type of road that we're doing, it's hard to get what you guys are looking for. The one street, that Triple Bend, the homes, is that, is that an understanding?
I don't know.
Okay, very nice homes, but you have a county road. It's not a paved asphalt road.
That worked out.
What we need to do in the future to avoid, most of your complaints are, and they're design issues. And not so much that you designed it incorrectly, it's just not designed for what you guys are expecting. What you have is you have driveways that have a lip. They had a lip before. The only way I can fill that in is to cut the crown down and make the road even flatter. Big mistake. Y'all complained about standing water. Unless we have at least two percent crossfall, we can't get rid of the water shedding off the road. We need a master grading plan on the streets to control the water to match all the driveways, because all the driveways are at different height. We need to take a section of road, a smaller section of road, we need to engineer it. We need to do driveway penetrations where the road will actually match the driveway. And then instead of, the reclamation is actually a good thing. We do that all the time. But when we're dealing with cement, anytime you mix dry cementing, as soon as we activate the water, we have a certain amount of time to work that road before it's set up. Once that's done, if we are laying two inches of hot mixed asphalt, like you were saying, this street has out here, that hides any little nick and hole or any imperfection due to the amount of time we have to work that material. A typical base section, we'll blade that thing for days and days. We'll blade it, we'll water it, we'll roll it. We'll get a crust over it, we'll cut the fines off, it fills the holes, that takes days to do. With cement stabilization, what we did here, we had hours to do it. We get a minimum of two passes and it is what it is. And then typically, when we put a two-inch asphalt section over the top, it'll fill in all those little undulations and it makes a wonderful, nice driving surface, what you guys were looking for. Anytime you're just spraying oil and you're dumping rock on top of that oil, it's going to match what is ever there. We needed, on these streets like Triple Bend, what we needed to do is we needed to do a reclamation and we needed to compact that material, we needed to test it. And then we needed to import another six inches of crushed limestone in two lifts to get a nice crown to get that stuff off of there. And then we needed to do hot mixed asphalt paving instead of a chip seal. I mean, the big complaints that I'm seeing or the amount of rock that's out there, you don't like the way the street looks, but it's a chip seal, it's a cheap county road, it does not match your subdivision. So instead of trying to cover a whole bunch of streets in three years, you need to pick out a street, do it one time and do it right. Get a master grading plan where we can add fill, we can control the water, we can control our work instead of trying to satisfy a bunch of people with a small amount of dollars. I think it's better if we were to try to satisfy a few people and we get, take a few more years in the deal. Whether we're involved or not. And I'll answer any questions you guys have, anything we did.
Sir. Can you give us an idea of doing it with the asphalt, as you were saying, one street, Triple Bend, would cost us?
The cost is considerable. It's a considerable amount more, like hot mixed asphalt would be about $10 a square yard versus the four or five dollars a square yard for the double cores. It's about twice as much. But you're getting a 25-year pavement design instead of a five-year pavement design.
So, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but to do, say, Triple Bend, the length of here, might have cost us?
The full budget.
The full budget to two months.
But you would have had a road these people were proud of and they loved, instead of one that would just piss a bunch of people off.
Well, we're all upset with all of our streets, because I live in Tierra Bonita. And you redid my street, Tierra Rancho. And I mean, not that Tierra Rancho really needed it, but it was reclaimed. But I'm just disappointed, it doesn't seem like we have enough, that like it was two passes of chip seal. I mean, it just doesn't seem like it is thick enough for what I would have thought, two layers of chip seal would be enough.
Well, it's a, it's a basically three-inch rock, so I mean, you're still under that. So it's very, very. And the problem is, is you match whatever is existing. And when I drove those streets today, there's some places that hold a little bit of water. But that, those are the areas that there was no reclamation on. Those were areas where we just put chip seal over the top of whatever existed. And it's kind of like paint job. When you paint over something, it's just going to match whatever they're there. If there was a dent in the car before, the paint's not going to take the dent out. You have to do the bodywork, pull the dents out, sand it, surface it, prepare it, and then the paint goes over again. And that's all we did was just paint over what was existing. That's why you're seeing some of the grass come up, that hot oil, that's like fertilizer. You know, there's, there's a lot of steps. No offense to Jim at all. But I believe the design wasn't what your residents were looking for. Any other question?
I'm going to let you guys handle all the, handle all the labor questions. I, I mean, I called up the city hall and complained and started asking questions in reference to the streets. As far as safety goes, and I don't know what kind of rules your guys follow as safety procedures, but it's extremely unsafe for our children, for the school buses that are coming in and out. When they're doing this work, they have doors wide open on their trucks. They're not wearing any type of safety vest. It's extremely unsafe, you know, you've got rocks flying all over the place, so I'd like to see something. I mean, obviously, I think everybody wants the roads done. We moved to China Grove from a county road and it's like we're right back on a county road again, which is extremely, it's very disappointing. So I don't know what can be done as far as safety goes, just for our citizens. I drove, I was off for two full days, you know, I work a full-time job. I was off for two full days. I left the house six times, which means I came back and forth 12 times during the time they were working. Not one time was the door shut on the truck and not one time where they were in safety vests. So, so I mean, I think that that's just something for your knowledge.
That's, that's not acceptable.
That can be addressed. And I have one more. There's, there's also, as far as the, as far as the road that was just done, there's a pot hole like 100 yards in. So I mean, what, what's being done to make sure that when they are done right, I mean, I know you were talking about you don't have two hours to settle, but there's already water sitting and holes being dug out from the original road was better than what's sitting there right now. So I'd like to get your take on, on.
Well, I have to know what street you're talking about and what.
We're all talking about the same street.
Triple Bend.
Well, you're not going to get rid of the water with it when you have less than two percent fall. So, once again, if you notice the driveways, and I have video before we did it, and the driveway exposure, some of them, there is one section of the road that I've looked at where I think it's by 7622. There's a little, there's a little dip in a hump. And my crews are going back and we're going to replant about 300 feet of that section and we're going to redo that. Because that was unacceptable. But as far as the driveways, if we were to try to fill those driveways or fill those humps in, the road gets even flatter, which creates even more potholes. So to control potholes, we need to import material and bring that crown up. And once again, to get rid of the potholes, we have to be able to work that material, work that material. The process is a compaction process that we, we're kind of limited with the type of stabilization method we use here.
I completely, so on the, on the streets, I was also told that they're supposed to be wet down two times a day. Is that accurate statement?
I don't know where that came from.
I was told that.
Knowing that dust was a problem, we, your guy Tom, it's been watered every morning, it wasn't twice a day.
And we, I think we did that, we sent a water truck out.
They didn't water it. They didn't water my street either until that Wednesday, when Jim said he was coming out. They watered the night before. That was the first time they didn't water it since it had been laid two weeks prior.
Well, in the future, it needs to respect a precoated rock and that dust issue won't happen, won't have that issue. But the precoated rock is a lot more expensive than the whitewashed rock. That's why typically you see just the white rock that was used here, because it saves a lot of money.
So to go back to this question, are they, or are they not supposed to be wetting the streets?
No.
They're not?
No. That was in the courtesy issue, trying to fight off potholes.
So the precoated rock would make the roads look more black than white?
It looks more like, yes ma'am, it looks more like your traditional asphalt. And, and there's, there's a couple of pros to the precoated rock. It sticks to the oil that is laid, that it sticks to, and it bonds much better. And there's one. But the con is, it's a lot more expensive because it's an end-to-end material.
So what do they do out here on 1516? Is that the full, because you know, you see some roads where it's really, they have that machine and it's like a real thick and it takes them forever to get that stuff on the road.
That's hot mixed asphalt.
And what is this out here? Because this was a thin layer, just, I mean.
Well, then that was a chip seal, the same thing we used, but they used the precoated rock and it has a heavier aggregate than what was used.
And that's the same thing they did with Triple Pine.
But that's not China Grove, that's China Grove, that's a county road, county.
The one that did, did a good job.
Right, right. Well, that's why I'm saying, you keep on saying county roads. Well, it's like we've got a dirt road right now, you know? So that's a county road. I think even that would be good.
On the county, after they did the surface treatment on the county road out there in 1516, I mean, they did it at night. We all woke up one morning and we had, oh my God, we got a brand new road out. And it was great. There wasn't a bit of, a bit of dust at all. After, after the surface treatment was done in our neighborhood, and I live over in Tierra Nueva, so after they did the surface treatment on Tierra Bonita, we've had nothing but dust until we had this recent round of rain come through. So I question whether or not the washed rock that was, was used was actually washed rock. It generated so darn much dust, it was tremendous.
Well, all I can say is that's typical of that type of rock. But your dust problems, they're over.
So the, the street, Triple Bend now, if we wanted a better street, like you said, a city street, how much would it cost if it was set more?
Well, no, I mean, what you have now, you have an investment in it and it's not wasted by any means. All you'd have to do is put hot mix over the top of that. Because typically, what chip seal or seal coat is anyway, is it's a primer for asphalt or it goes over the top of asphalt to preserve it.
Yeah, but you were talking about a road that'll last five years versus a road that'll last how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, well, I would say let's get a road that lasts longer. And I still say we need to raise the tax. And I talk to people about the tax. And when I tell them how much we paid in China Grove tax, they know what I'm talking about. And they agree with me that we need to raise the China Grove tax. But when they look over the overall tax, they don't see it unless you point it out. And I still say we need to raise the tax, get some better roads.
Okay, Clements, go ahead.
One more, look, we're not here to make anybody mad. If anybody has a concern, sir, I apologize, my loaders turned around and I'll address that because they know better than that. Because a big percentage of our work is city reconstruct work. So my sincere apology, but if y'all have issues with a driveway or a mailbox or sod, believe me, if you guys will call our office, we'll address every single issue.
Well, I think what it is really, and I'm just bawling down, you walk into McDonald's, you have a nice pretty picture of a burger, that's what you expect to get.
I never gave you a picture of a burger.
I'm saying the city council was going to depression, this is what we're going to get, a finished road. Well, we didn't. They were running the pressure, we're going to hit a big back and we got a small one.
I can understand, I can understand everybody's disappointment, believe me.
I'm breaking out the janitor's purse. You were paid so much, you have your budget to work with, that's what you did. I'm not complaining at you at all. In the least bit, you were paid to do a $10 junkie.
Well, you still can. All you do is you pave over the top of that and then you just set your paving machine. And you can set a crown on your paving machine where it paves the center a little thicker than the edge and you'll end up with a beautiful road. But that's, that's not, that's not everything.
And there's a little bit more to it. I mean, there's some treatment that needs to be done before you do that. We've got grass encroaching on the roads and all the way through the, the city's own road.
That's going to take the maintenance program by the city to run the residence.
Absolutely. But wouldn't you have to treat that before you go in here and put asphalt through the top of it? Otherwise, it's just going to get kicked in the butt right through there and it's going to crack the asphalt.
I have another question. The paper entrances now, I had that small dent before, then I found it. Now it's that one. The whole driveway. It's actually below the cement itself, the groove they dug out.
Okay, well, through the grading process, I saw some of those like that. If there are any excesses, we'll be happy to go back in there and we'll saw cut and we'll put hot mix and we'll build a new approach for anybody.
Well, I have, the approach maker's okay. It's the drop off.
That's what I called it, to where it meets the asphalt pavement, right?
It's hard replacing my sod. At least they did take out my mailbox. But I'll replace the sod.
I bought a lot of mailboxes.
My sod is in my neighbor's yard, still piled up over there.
And what street do you live on?
Triple Bend.
Well, if, if there are driveways that are, you know, that you have a bump, I'd be happy to send my guys out there and we'll put an asphalt approach to ramp them up to there where it's a smooth transition. Like I said, we're not here to make anybody mad. We're here to make them happy. I think what y'all are unhappy with is we're just trying to do too much street and satisfy too many people. And you know the old saying, you try to make everybody happy, all you do is make a lot of people upset.
I would like to add one thing. You might want to come check out Tierra Rancho too. Only because there's one part that's like a cement that was put here a few years ago to help drain the water. All this rain, the way they did the roads, the water is on each side of the cement is what's draining. It doesn't get on the cement, because I think that road's a little bit lower. What you put down was a little bit lower than the cement, because the water goes right alongside the cement, which is just going to dig out.
And what street was that?
Tierra Rancho. Right at the cement, this corner.
Okay, I think I know the problem.
I mean, when it was raining, it was on both sides of the cement.
Hey, look, we've been in business for, we've been in business for 20 years. There's a one-year warranty that goes with the job, so if there are any issues, we come back and fix it. I mean, we're not here to drop a road and then leave, so if there are issues, we'll, we'll take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clements.
Thank you.
Okay, just a comment on this. This is our first meeting since the road's been done. We haven't really had to talk among ourselves here, but we have heard your complaints. And I think that you and all of us here, it's not what we really thought was good. We're going to talk it over. Take this consideration and something will be done. Thank you, Mr. Clements. Okay, next thing on the agenda is old business. Consider an act on agreement proposal for City Attorney Services, Davis, Rodeo, Florida, I mean. Okay, we found out that we didn't have an agreement with the attorneys that we were using. They had given us a proposal now, but we've looked at the fees and their, their attorney fees have been quite high over the past 18 months here. We have actually been paying close to $500 just from the 10 council meetings. Their fees have exceeded our budget. We have paid more for attorney fees over the past 18 months than we had over the past 10 years. We are $30,000 over budget on attorney fees. This is entirely too much, especially when we're trying to do some streets. We have budget hearings and we approve a yearly budget every year. And as council members, it is our duty to keep these expenses of the city within the budget. We can't afford these attorneys. They have not let us use the Texas Attorney General's office to get the free implementation. They want us to call them where they can charge $185 per hour to give us this information that we could give for free. So I recommend that we do not sign this proposal. Now, I'll leave it open to the rest of the council if you have any comments.
All I have to say is I have to agree totally with what you just said, Mr. McCarty.
All I have to say is I have to agree totally with what you just said, Mr. McCarty. It's not like we wouldn't, their services have been available for us, but I don't think we can afford them. So I would like to make a motion that we um, do not use their services and maybe put out a proposal to maybe another city attorney and let's see what we can get, uh, to try to keep us in budget. I mean, we're not even close, we're so far over budget that we have to do something. And that is what I am making a motion, that we sit out proposals to other city attorneys to see if we can get us a better rate.
That's the next one here. So this one here, uh, you'd have to make your motion and we just don't sign the proposal now.
Well, at this point, I don't think we need to sign the proposal, since it has never been sent. We were under the impression that it was signed, uh, that was before, of course, some, several of us were not on, on board at that time. And since it never was signed at this point, then I wanna make a motion that we don't sign it after expenses occurred that we have seen and because of our budget. I mean, we need to stay within a reasonable budget.
Okay, both of you on the floor to uh, not sign the proposal, attorney proposal, need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, rules have been made, both debated and second, any questions?
I, I have a question, what did you read, I don't know, where did that come from?
What's that?
What you were reading, because uh, the original agreement was, I believe, and maybe council can verify it, that uh, there was a monthly stipend and that they would attend one meeting, was included in that. Is that correct? I don't see it here.
As I, as I understand it, you know.
This doesn't look like what I saw before.
The agreement?